Welcome, everybody. Thank you guys for joining us. Today, we're going to be conducting a debate for candidates for the Board of Aldermen in Mountain View. We have with us today two candidates for the same ward. They are on opposite ends of the dais here. We have Greg Pearson, and we have Jennifer McAdams. Also with us today, we have Gail Wallander. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Thank you. She is running unopposed, so she's going to have an opportunity to speak today. But obviously, because she is unopposed, there's no reason for her to debate. You're going to have an opportunity to just sort of ask personal questions on a casual basis before we get into the back and forth between the two contested candidates. I am Amanda Mendez. I own and operate Howe County News. There are some papers on the back. If you don't subscribe, I think most everybody in here does. But if you don't, there is some introduction on how to do that. Thank you all for being here in the afternoon. As you may know, we had to scoot it up a little bit in the day because the Howe County Republicans are having their Lincoln Days event this evening. That's going to be at 5:30 in the Magnolia Room of the Civic Center. And I always recommend going and getting involved in those local politics. So candidates, I encourage you to do that as well. I'd like to thank our sponsors, of course. Venue122, TNT Wi-Fi has donated our Wi-Fi connection today. Crosscut Package and Andrew Make Your Shelter Insurance are all making this possible. So thank you to our sponsors. And just before we get started, if you'd all just join me in a quick prayer, please. I appreciate it. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for our freedoms. We thank you for our country. We thank you for our community. We thank you for the freedom to choose our leaders. Be with us this afternoon as we work through these questions, as we work through all the issues that matter most to the people of Mountain View. Let everything you say and do be to your ultimate glory. In the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. And with that, we are going to have our unopposed candidate give her introduction. All these responses are going to be timed, and candidates, it's going to be strictly enforced. So everyone's going to have three minutes for an introductory speech. And any time you answer, it's going to be one minute. Now, of course, if we're getting into the discussion and it feels as if one minute is not enough for everybody, we're going to extend it so we can all have a sort of informed discussion, a full discussion as much as we can. So, Gail, if you would, you may remain seated or stand, but you have three minutes, ma'am. Go ahead.
My name is Barbara Gail Wallander. I go by Gail. I have lived here for nearly 25 years. In town, I've lived for 12 years. As a community member, I've seen how things have changed over the last few years and how much needs to be done to our community to keep it thriving. I just, I wanted to... I can't gripe about it if I don't do something about it. So that's why I chose to run as a city councilman. I've got two kids. One of them has moved away. And I can't get her to move back because there's nothing here for them. And I don't want to see other families go through where their kids have to move away to survive and to live and to make a life.
Thank you so much. Okay. And with that, I do have one question prepared here that I think I'm going to ask her. But if there are any questions from the audience, we'll take up to five before we get into the structured debate. Is there anyone who'd like to offer a question to our soon-to-be new alderwoman? Okay. Well, here is a question that I'm going to ask you, and I'm also going to pose to the two contested candidates. And it's from someone here today. "Will you commit to working with the current city government? And if so, how do you plan to do that?"
I can't give a full response on that because it's... You have to see which way they're heading and to make sure that they're doing the right things for our community and not just for themselves. I'm not in there, so I don't know exactly what they're doing. You've got a lot of hearsay and rumors because this is a small-town USA, so I can't, I can't... I mean, if I can work with them, I'll work with them the best that I can.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. With that, any other questions for our uncontested candidate? Okay, there you go. Laura, would you help me... Is that a question for our contestant? No? No. Laura, will you help me with the coin toss, please? So, Gail, thank you so much for your time today. You can stay there, or you can participate in the audience, or just go enjoy this beautiful holiday. I think you do it over there. So we're going to do a coin toss to determine which of these candidates is going to be able to speak first. Jennifer, if you would call it in the air, please. Hands.
And then I'll flip it off.
Hands.
It is tails.
It is tails. Okay, Greg, would you like to speak first, or would you prefer your opponent to speak first?
She can speak first.
Okay, lovely. Ms. McAdams, you have three minutes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, and I would like to thank everyone for attending today, especially Laura and Amanda and the Howe County News for putting us all together. I would like to formally introduce myself. My name is Jennifer McAdams. My husband, Ernie, and I have called this town home for 20 years now. Both of our boys graduated from the Mountain View School District, and they remain residents. My oldest son and his wife are now raising their four children here, my four grandbabies. I made the decision to run for the seat of East Ward Alder Woman due to the concerns with the leadership and direction our town is heading. We cannot continue letting this occur, and if we don't get this corrected now, it may be irreversible. This is why I stand on these three beliefs: transparency, accountability, and responsibility. These three pillars are instrumental in not only government efficiency, but public trust. Transparency: the state of being open and honest, disclosure to the degree in which relevant details are available to the citizens so they can be informed. Because of lack of it, it can lead to mistrust, misunderstanding, and conflicts. We will communicate clearly and encourage positivity with ensuring decisions and actions that are based on fairness, integrity, and respect for all. Together, we will create a streamlined process for information requested by the citizens and made readily available. Accountability: will mean our city will no longer hide under the excuse of "that's how it's always been." We will recognize the past failures, and we will actively work towards fixing them instead of putting them in a corner, never giving them the attention they deserve. We will learn from past mistakes, and we will energetically and enthusiastically move forward, mending those errors. And finally, responsibility: we will recognize the missteps of our city that has made and accept that our burdened citizens are feeling the falls on our back instead of theirs. We will move quickly to rectify, and we will correct and come up with comprehensive plans to those situations, holding those accountable, and taking ownership of the actions while being honest and transparent. This is our town, and together, we must work toward a better tomorrow for Mountain View.
Thank you. Very, very good. Candidates, I'm going to stand when you have 10 minutes or 10 seconds remaining. If it's longer than it seems, so go ahead and finish your thought if you see me rise to my feet. But Mr. Pearson, you have your three minutes. Please go ahead, sir.
My name is Greg Pearson. I've lived here for about 10 years. First moved here to be a law enforcement officer. Served there for about a year before a break was needed. In the 10 years I've been here, I've watched the city decline. And as I'm living here and don't plan to leave, it makes me unhappy, and that is why I chose to run for city council. It's... I've seen a lack of government since I've been here, or at least a lack of responsibility in the government and transparency, hiding behind vague RSMOs and whatnot. I do serve on the fire department, and I still reserve as a Mountain View police officer. Not a whole lot I can do right now because of legal stuff that I'm dealing with and my personal physical problems. But like my fellow candidates said, I can't really complain if I'm not willing to step in and help solve the problems. Transparency is huge. That is something that I have seen numerous people in this city complain about, is just not having any idea of what's going on or why. And that is one of the biggest things I hope to fix if I'm elected into the council. I appreciate all of you being here, and thank you.
Lovely. And with this, we're going to move into the debate portion of the afternoon. And first question's going to go to Mr. Pearson. And this is a question submitted from someone here this afternoon. It's the same one that Gail answered. "Will you commit to working with the current city government? If so, how do you plan to do that?" One minute, sir.
I do plan to commit to working with them. Working as a team is the only way we're going to get things done. Hopefully, with all of our minds together, we can find common ground to assess and fix the problems that are currently going on in this town, whether it be the transparency or actual issues with roads, sewers, you know, anything that has to do with the town.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, rebuttal. One minute.
I do think that there is a lot that needs to be done with this city. I do think that our city has declined quite a bit in the last several years. I'm not going to pin no blame on anybody, but it takes all of us to do this together. I think there needs to be more transparency with the public. I do think the public should have a voice in everything because it is their town, just as much as it is the next person. And I am hoping that I can get with the rest of the Aldermen's and the mayor and anyone, and see if we can get together and get this all seen about, taken care of, and done. Our city has so much potential. And I have, again, I have four grandchildren. I do not want my grandchildren to move away. I want them to call this home, just like I have for 20 years. And if we don't do something now, we won't have that opportunity for them.
Thank you. That is your time, Mrs. McAdams. Okay, I'm going to take this opportunity to remind anyone sitting here today that we are going to take questions continuously throughout the event. So if you have a question that you've written down, just raise your hand, and Laura will pick it up from you. If you haven't received an index card, there are some on the back table. And for everybody who's watching online, we're going to take questions from the livestream continuously throughout the event as well. So, Mrs. McAdams, next question is for you from someone here today. What part should social media play in city government? One minute.
I feel like it should play a lot, but then again, it shouldn't because that's where things get misunderstood, misconceived, and then it's like a hash house. Everybody starts in, and they're downing everybody, making accusations. And I think it needs to be where the public can speak one-on-one at the meetings and communicate with each other without hiding behind phones and instruments and stuff like that. That's why I think it needs to be... I think we need to be more publicly one-on-one than we do behind things. I'm real big on the face-to-face, let's talk this out, let's get this going, and work on it from there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pearson, rebuttal. One minute.
I do believe, especially in today's age, that social media should play a large role. It can definitely help with the transparency. It can help get the word out that, hey, we have meetings, or this is what's going on. But at the same time, like she said, at the meetings, we should be able to just speak clearly and concisely one-on-one to help get things done correctly.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pearson, this is a question to you from Mr. Daniels, who is here today. It is a three-part question, so I'm going to give you two minutes to answer. Mrs. McAdams, you will also get two minutes to rebut. So here are the three parts. Do you keep up to date on issues within the city? What are the top three issues you think Mountain View faces? And how will you address those issues? If you're progressing through your time and you'd like me to repeat any, just wave at me, I'll stop your timer, and I can repeat it. Okay? Shall I repeat it now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you keep up to date on issues within the city? What are the top three issues you think Mountain View faces? And how will you address those issues? Two minutes, sir.
I do keep up. I may not be at meetings. I've got other things going on. I've got a wife who works a lot of overtime. That's neither here nor there. The three biggest concerns that I have seen most recently has been the hike and sewage. The sewage bills, utilities, all that. Transparency has been the biggest one for numerous years. And the next one comes down, I'd say, between either the roads or the turnover the city has had in employment. I can't speak to how to fix the employment. That has... It's beyond my understanding right now. It's not being part of council. As for the sewer and the streets, I hope to find information that we could give to the public as to why these hikes have occurred and why the streets are still as rough as they are after so many years.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, two minutes. Could you repeat the question? Absolutely. Do you keep up to date on the issues within the city? What are the top three issues you think Mountain View faces? And how will you address these issues?
I am on it every day. I investigate, dig, look around, whatever you want to call. But I do think our town economically is in a decline. If I believe if we do not get some new businesses and revenue in this town, we're facing a bad direction. I do believe that there could be a lot more improvements. I'm not very happy with how the street conditions are and how some things are being handled. But I plan on getting right in on it, doing the best I can to figure it out and see what we can do to make a solution for it. I am a little upset about the utilities. That is something that our residents here, a majority of our residents, are of senior age, and I'm one of them. But they cannot afford this. And there has got to be a better solution than raising their utilities. They just cannot deal with this. And there has... There has got to be somewhere where everybody can get together, meet in the middle, and let's figure this out because this is not heading in a good direction either. And like I continue saying, I want to see Mountain View have a future. If we do not have a future with this town, it is going to end up like a lot of our small towns that has nothing left, and everyone's moving away.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. McAdams, this is a question from our newsroom. You will have one minute, ma'am.
Okay.
How do you think the management and operations of the golf course should be handled?
Well, I think it should be managed properly, correctly. I do believe that our golf course does have potential, a lot of potential. It is a historical place in this town. This is one of our main infrastructures that has been here for many, many years. It honors a lot of people through the years. And I think, given the right potential, I think it can be managed correctly if done properly.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, one minute.
The golf course is a big topic. I've heard a lot of people say one way or the other on whether the city needs it or not. I do know that it has been here for a very long time, and there are several citizens who do enjoy it. I feel like since I've been here, its members have declined. And I don't know what it's doing for the city financially one way or the other as I've not been privy to budgets and spreadsheets. But given the right leadership and maybe some advertisement, hopefully, the golf course could thrive and return to its glory and bring money to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, this next question is for you from our newsroom. You'll have one minute. Should Mountain View seek to hire a city administrator?
Been a hot topic for years. It really could go either way. It could cause too many chiefs and not enough Indians. But at the same time, it could alleviate stress off of others that work in the city and manage more departments than they probably should be. So again, that's something that I would have to look into more if I'm in office and can see more numbers and things like that.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, one minute.
I do believe we need one. I do believe that would help us fundamentally. I do believe that would help us a lot better with grants and grant writing and directions that they could take us and take our town. A city administrator has a lot of cool and has a lot of knowledge of things that can be done for this town. And I think that is one thing that we are definitely lacking, and I am very much for it.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to take this opportunity to remind you again that we are taking questions continuously through the event. Feel free to pass them in as they occur to you. And anybody who's just joining us on the livestream, we will take your questions online as well. This next question is for Mrs. McAdams. It is from Mr. Daniels, who is here today. "Separation of power is important. How will you, as a councilperson, ensure the council will have a fair voice and opinion on the board?" One minute.
Well, there is a time and a place for everything. And I do believe that it can go a little too far, as far as that. But I think with the right team, I think you can actually... There should be no reason why there would be any issues with anybody at all. We are all in this together for our town. We are all in this to make sure our town is better and moving forward. And I will stand up for the town. And I am not afraid to speak my voice. I mean, there's going to be disagreements, there's going to be not. But I think... I think that we should just all just be in it, be in on it together and just do what is best for our town, put everything aside. That is what our number one concern is right now, is our town.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, one minute.
If I'm the city council, I would hope to be able to come to common grounds with my fellow councilmembers to at least come to a majority vote so it doesn't have to fall onto our mayor who won highbreaker. At the end of the day, it is the council's job to make those decisions. And again, common ground should be able to be found with like-minded individuals who want to help this town in the correct way.
Thank you. Okay. We are continuing with questions from Mr. Daniels, who is here today. This one is for you, Mr. Pearson. "The public sentiment around our town is there is no cooperation between the mayor and the council. How would each of you work for the citizens to build a public trust and to show government cooperation?" One minute.
Again, that goes back to common ground. Clearly, there needs to be calm, concise discussions between our councilmembers, which also needs to be conveyed to our mayor. I've heard that there are, you know, disagreements in that. But as not being part of the council or City Hall, I cannot speak to how mad they truly are. Again, small town, great mind. But again, it's the... It's being able to communicate, being able to come to common grounds without being bullheaded and just so stuck in your way that you can't agree to meet in the middle.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, rebuttal.
I think it all stems down to transparency. And I think that it needs to be honest. Everyone needs to be honest. Everyone needs to be fair. It shouldn't be what one person wants. It should be what the community needs. And I still believe that the community needs to be on the top of the list of being involved. I think they should have a right to stand up and speak. I think they should have a right to voice their opinion on it and be involved in it 100% because it is the council and the mayor's job to listen to their citizens and not take it a personal vendetta. It should be all about listening and transparency and honesty on top of that.
Thank you. Next question is for you, Mrs. McAdams. It's from our newsroom. "The current administration has indicated that tax increases may be coming. Would you vote for or against them?" One minute, ma'am.
Depending on what the tax increase is, depending on where the funding will be coming from, it needs to be looked into. It needs to be studied. It needs to be where the people can afford it. Again, we're a small town. We live just like normal folks around here. We don't have that extra money for taxes and utility bills raising and this and that. And that is where we have got to figure out what is best and not just jump up and make a rash decision over it. And that's where a city administrator comes in also. I think that they will look into the best possibilities for our town. They know where things can be gotten where it doesn't affect our citizens as much.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, rebuttal.
Unfortunately, taxes are a part of our lives. We live in an imperfect world. There is inflation. Everything's going up, which means the cost of everything in the city is going up. And to afford that, unfortunately, we're going to have to shoulder some of that burden. I myself understand the issues with being able to afford taxes and utilities. But I also understand that it's going to happen. There are bills to be paid. There are improvements to be made. And even with grants, most of the time, they require the city to bring at least so much money to the project. We have several big projects that need done. Our roads, to my understanding, the sewer lines are extremely outdated. And these projects have to be done, and without funds that comes from the city taxes, there's really no way to afford it.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Pearson, this is a question for you from Mr. Daniels, who is here today. "You stated golf course memberships have declined. Where did you see those numbers? Also, would you be for privatizing the golf course over city control?" One minute.
I've not seen the numbers. When I say I've seen the decline, it's when I drive by. I don't see the vehicles there that I used to. I used to drive by and see rows, two or three rows of cars, and now it's... It's very hit or miss on how many people are there. I will admit I don't drive by as much, but I, again, when I do, I just don't see the people that are there. Whether it should be part of the city or private, again, that would come down to budget, in my opinion. I'm not privy to those numbers at the moment, but it's something that definitely should be looked at.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, rebuttal. One minute.
I really don't think I need to respond on that one.
Okay, no problem. Okay. The next question is for you, Mrs. McAdams, from our newsroom. "What do you think is the biggest issue the business community faces in Mountain View?"
Lack of. Our town... Lack of. Our town is right in the middle of a major road from east to west. I believe that we need new businesses. We need, we need employment here. A majority, and I'm talking over half, of our residents have to drive for at least 30 minutes to an hour to a job. Why can't our town have that? At one time, it did. And there was a lot more people here, and they're leaving because there's nothing. We have not shown any vast improvement over the last few years that I'm aware of. I feel like that it's, it, there's just so much potential for our town. And I can see it. Willow Springs is absolutely blowing me. Our town needs to follow in that footstep, and let's get our town back on track.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, one minute.
We definitely need more businesses. It definitely helps with the city's income and infrastructure. We don't have enough to support our citizens right now in the needs that they have. As stated, you know, we have to drive 30 minutes or more to get a sufficient amount of groceries. We have a grocery store, but they just don't carry everything. We are on a major thoroughway. I work in Carter County, which is the vampiric area. And I have seen people who live over there. I've seen people from Eminence here shopping. And if we had more infrastructure and more businesses, we might see more of them because Carter County is very small. Shannon County's small, and neither one of them really have much of anything. And their options right now are driving much further than we do. But I feel like we could come together and help that if we could bring more businesses.
Can I make a statement? I don't have one, too. No, ma'am. You have your time. Okay, so moving on, the next question is for Mr. Pearson. It's from our newsroom. We have all experienced inflation over the last few years. As many components used by various city utilities have increased, would you rather raise taxes to keep utilities operating at a current level or not raise taxes and perform less utility maintenance and repairs? Mr. Pearson, you have one minute, sir.
Utility repairs are mandatory. If things are not kept up to date, then the city can be fined for having severe issues with, say, the sewage leaking to other places, too much drain water going in that's not being recycled the correct way and costing us more money. The same with our electricity. If we don't keep it up to date, you know, the city's going to constantly be losing power. The other day during all the wind, we, the whole west side, or at least a good chunk of the west side, lost power. Couldn't tell you why, but I know better poles, better transformers, better lines could help keep that going. So unfortunately, taxes are going to increase, as I stated earlier in the previous question.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, one minute.
I do, I'm still depending on where the taxes are coming from. There is a lot of studying a person can do. I don't feel like the citizens should be hit as hard. You know, there's things like gas taxes. Let somebody else pay the extra. We have travelers. We have seasons around here where people come through here all the time from different states. And we're already used to paying a high gas anyway, so why not? Let's have a gas tax. Let's not tax our citizens personally, and let's kind of keep these utility bills down. Again, there is a lot of our citizens that live on fixed income. They cannot afford a $500 electric bill. They cannot afford a high sewer bill. And there has got to be a solution out there to prevent this from happening and getting it through other means.
Okay, we're going to stick with you with a question from Mr. Daniels that's on the same vein, which is, would either of you agree to look where money can be cut from the city budget before bringing another tax to the citizens?
Oh, most definitely. There, there, there can be cuts in spending in certain areas, I'm sure. And then again, like I said, we've got to do something to prevent this from being on our citizens' back. There is things that's probably wasteful. I'm sure there's wasteful spending. There's wasteful spending in all places. But we need to look and see where it's at, and we need to fix it. We need to find other ways through grants, through, um, programs, through whatever it takes before we start taking it out on the citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, one minute.
That is most definitely where we should look first, um, before taxing our citizens any harder than we want. There's not a lot around here for people to make income. There's a lot of fixed income. So if there is frivolous spending in the city somewhere, that should definitely be cut to help alleviate any financial issues that could be burdened on our, put on our scissors. Again, not being privy to those numbers at the moment, I can't say yay or nay on how much is being spent. But I do believe that there is probably, as she said, plenty of it that's out there that we could cut and move towards other lines of business.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, we're going to stay on the topic of budgeting and finances for this next question, which is from our newsroom. Uh, what is your plan as you sit here today for the financial difficulties that the city is facing? Do you have one? One minute, sir.
Again, not being privy to the numbers, it's hard to really say. Again, checking the spending, making sure departments aren't spending more money than they need to be, buying frivolous things that aren't necessarily needed would definitely be a way to help alleviate stress. Looking into ways to bring new businesses in. That would be a task I'd have to figure out. A way to entice other people to come here, show them why this is such a great city and why it's a, it's a beautiful town. I love it. I've been here. Don't plan to leave. But we need other people to see that, to bring businesses in, to help the infrastructure.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, rebuttal.
I do believe that a lot can be taken care of if we get our infrastructure up to power. You know, we have pipes under the ground that's been there for years, many years. And if you get them upgraded, updated, and repaired, that is less wasteful spending later on down the road to constantly fix a broken main here, to constantly repair something there. This town needs a big upgrade for one. Two, there is, again, there is spending out there that probably could be cut back. But it all retains to saving money by upgrading our utilities, our streets. Street repair every day, it's ridiculous to repair them, and it might take years before they need repaired again.
Thank you. We're going to move on to a question submitted by someone in our audience here today. Mrs. McAdams, you'll have the first answer of this question. The community has had concerns in the past about conflict of interest. Does either candidate have family members employed by the city? If so, in what capacity? One minute, ma'am.
I can understand that, and yes, my husband is the manager of the golf course. But that is not why I'm running. That is not anything to do with what I feel is going on with the city. That is his job, just like my job. My thoughts on it is, there could be a conflict. It was, I'm sure somebody's going to come up and say, well, you know, your husband works for the city, so you're going to lean to that. No. As far as that, I have no use for the golf course. It's nothing to me, other than it is a historical structure for our town, just like the parks, just like the Veterans Memorial. But that will not affect my theory, my thoughts, my decisions on anything to do with this town. My thoughts were about this town long before that. And I just want to make sure that our town has a future.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, one minute.
I have no conflicts of interest. Uh, the only family I have here is my wife and my two children. So I'm pretty neutral on anything. And again, I would be here to just come to common ground and help alleviate any issues we have in the city.
Thank you. All right, our next question is going to stay with you, Mr. Pearson. It is from, um, Mrs. Wagner, who is a member of our newsroom and a resident of Mountain View. The mayor slash board were voted in by the people. They were entrusted to do the job, to do the right thing. Do you think it would slow the decision-making process at meetings if every citizen were allowed to speak? What is a good solution for making voices feel heard? One minute.
I believe if everyone in the meeting spoke, yes, it would extend the meeting. A good forum would actually be what's going on here. People write down questions. Uh, have someone who can go through them, put any like questions together, bundle some up, make them more than one. But I do believe the people have a voice. They should have a voice. They're the ones who put us in office. Why would we want to ignore them?
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, one minute, ma'am.
I do believe that everyone should be able to speak. There's a lot of times, there's 10 people at a meeting. Sometimes there's 20 people at a meeting. It shouldn't matter. They are elected officials. It shouldn't matter if it takes 20 minutes, 30 minutes, four hours. That is the people's voice. It's their time. And they should be able to be transparent with the city council, the mayor, or whoever's involved. I do not think it's right that people don't get to say their piece or speak. That is why you are elected in that seat. You work for the people. They don't work for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to stay on the topic of transparency and try to put a little bit of a finer point on it, if you don't mind. We've talked a lot about transparency here today. So is this idea of creating more of a town hall atmosphere at the meetings of the Board of Alderman, the, the main idea that you have for how you will help to be transparent to the people who vote you in? Do you have other concrete examples? Mrs. McAdams, go ahead with your first minute, please.
I think if you're just honest, if you just, if somebody is a concern, just be honest with them. Don't, don't mislead them. Don't make promises, because promises just cannot be kept. You just express that you will do the best you can. You will work hard for them. And you will let them know every step of the way how things are going. You communicate with them. You do not ignore their needs. You stay on top of it. But as far as transparency, if you do not have it with the public, you will be mistrusted, and they will not believe or feel like you're doing them right. And that is one of the biggest things that's going on now. There is not enough transparency.
Okay. Mr. Pearson, rebuttal. One minute.
Transparency, transparency is important. One way would be, again, social media. It could be a great way to get information straight from the meeting to the public in a way that helps out those who may or may not be able to get to the meetings. Another way is, I've heard a lot of issues with closed session meetings, vague reasoning for them. And there needs to be a more direct answer as to why we would go into a closed meeting without going into private details or too many details that aren't privy to the public. But other than that, uh, making sure that if questions are posted prior to the meetings that could be put on the docket, to make sure they're there, again, make sure the people are heard, and we are calm and clear.
That is your time, Mr. Pearson. Thank you so much. Um, we're going to stick with you, um, for a short question. I'm not going to consider this your turn. But Mr. Daniels would like some clarification on whether or not you are employed in any capacity with the city and whether you consider that to be a conflict of interest. One minute.
I am employed as a reserve officer and a volunteer firefighter. I currently do anything I do for either department unpaid. It's all my volunteered time to help out where I can. So I can stay neutral. If it is something that pertains to wages or something that could benefit monetarily to either department, I would abstain from it.
Thank you. Anything to add, Mrs. McAdams? Okay, thank you so much. Um, and Mr. Pearson, we are going to stick with you for what will be our final question of the event. So consider this to be your last call. Anyone here in the audience today, anyone who's watching online, going once, going twice, turn them in if you've got them, please. Um, and this is from our newsroom, Mr. Pearson. Um, what is your impression of the work of the administrations over, say, the last five years? Would you seek to reform, or are you seeking to maintain the status quo? One minute, please.
From what I've seen of the past several years, there is some reform needed. There are jobs internally that should be looked into, as I've heard lots of complaints as to how things are handled, communication and cooperation between council and city employees. And that is something that definitely needs looked into and corrected, if at all possible.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, one minute, ma'am.
I do believe there needs to be some reform done. We are just stuck. We're not moving forward. I believe that there is quite a few changes that could be done for our city and could be done with the administration. I just feel that we cannot stay on the same thing. The, there's a lot of ordinances I feel needs revised, updated, uh, to fit the needs of today, not what has happened 20 years ago or occurred 20 years ago or was set in stone 20 years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago, however you want to put it. I do believe that everything needs to be looked into. Everything needs to be considered on each end. And if we don't get that up to date, then how can our town go on? How can we continue on if we don't get things where they need to be right now?
Thank you. Okay, absolute. Final call for any additional questions for our candidates today. Thank you all so much for being here. I'd like to say a special thank you to our two candidates. Um, folks, it is not easy to sit in the seat where they are sitting and to answer the questions that you may not know they were coming. I will share with you today that I didn't have any questions submitted in advance of the event. So they were completely unprepared and yet such good sports and ready to be as transparent as possible. So I think they all deserve a round of applause. I'll remind everyone here and everyone watching at home that Election Day is April 8th. And with that, we are going to move into our closing statements. Each candidate is going to have two minutes. Mr. Pearson, you may begin, please.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Being able to voice my concerns and my hopeful solutions to problems that we're facing in a face-to-face manner is much better, again, than, as she said, social media. While I have posted on social media, not everyone sees that as they're not friends. This gives live stream to other people and those here, and I appreciate you all being here.
Thank you. Mrs. McAdams, two minutes, ma'am.
I would like to thank all the organizers of this debate, my opponent, Mr. Pearson, the West Ward candidate, Ms. Wallander, and the audience for giving us the opportunity to participate today. The role of a city council member is to act as a legislative body, representing the citizens and establishing policies and guide to future developments, services and operations to ensure effective governance, advocating for both their needs and concerns while effectively serving the community. And as your city council member, my priorities will be taking responsibility, addressing and finding solutions along with ways to improve so our town can grow, including carrying out tasks and staying true to aim, actively listening and be representing the concerns of the residents. by communicating openly, honestly, and gaining their trust by promoting full transparency, acknowledging mistakes and taking corrective action because accountability leads to better results. I feel our town isn't in a good state right now and there is a lot that needs to be done. But if we work together, our town can thrive once again and secure its place so it can be around for generations to come. And I would really appreciate your vote on April 8th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, everyone. That concludes our event. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you to our candidates. Have a great day. Drive safely.